And here we call the rate and we're city council meeting to order Tuesday, October fourteenth at six P M. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Alex, please call the roll.
Mayor James Johnson, Council President Teresa Hilton Schaefer, Counselor Louise Burke, Counselor Larry Hicks,
Here.
Counselor Franklin Cobbs.
Here.
Counselor Tiffany Lambert.
Here.
Counselor Matt Wilhelm is absent. Student Counselor Jalen Tolliver appears to be absent, but we have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Revisions to the agenda?
Yes, sir. So we ended up getting a couple of last minute liquor licenses, so I wanted to recommend that you add item eight D liquor license public hearing. It's something you need to vote to add. It's not.
Yeah.
List. Yeah, that's correct.
My motion that we add the liquor license public hearing.
One second.
That's taken.
Get on favor.
Aye.
Proves. Thank you. All right. Was that well?
Yep.
All right. We'll move on to a public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? If not, I need a motion to suspend the agenda to allow Columbia vote.
I make a motion that we suspend the agenda to let them speak.
One second. All clear?
Aye.
Right. So you want to dive in with the first Alex and the public loan or anything like this?
Yeah. Um. Okay, this is not a very fun situation to be having. This is one of kind of several time bombs that has been left for us to deal with. Twenty eighteen, we got a massive loan from U S Bank to pay for this property with the city hall and the public workshop on it. And the loan terms included the loan maturing this year with a final balloon payment of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, which I understand we were never supposed to be able to make, but the plan was always that they were going to refinance it for us. And a year ago, I started talking to U S Bank about that. And after a very long drawn out process that involved talking to another bank specifically because of this reason, they finally got me all the documents. We needed to do this today. So we got with the assistance of our great friends at Columbia Bank, who I really, really appreciate. A bank council secured to review the documents, a new loan agreement drafted up, an amortization schedule that was prepared earlier, and a resolution that will allow us, one, to pay for the bank council expenses to negotiate this as well as fees with the state of Oregon and spend the next, ooh, what was it again? The new maturity date for the loan becomes twenty thirty five. So the the loan amount will not be to exceed nine hundred thousand. It's probably going to be eight hundred eighty six thousand. That's the estimate we're going with. That's what we're looking for to vote for tonight. In a perfect world, U S Bank would have gotten this done a lot more quickly instead of, you know, a year ago would have been my ideal timeline instead of today. Thankfully, we have such great partners in Columbia. So I threw this mess.
What do you do like to say?
That. There, Luke?
Luke, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Just appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with the city on this financing. I realize that the timing is 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 a bit brief, but we're, you know, working together with with the city and council and 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 sorry, their council and of course city council on a financing that should take care of this and also reamortize it so that it it's a more workable amortization structure with ten years versus it originally looks like it was a seven year loan with a twenty year amortization. But yeah, as as Alex noted, a a large balloon payment without really a structured plan for it. So this helps to address that.
We appreciate your work on.
Absolutely.
I I did look at this. I've been in contact with Alex about the process the whole time. I don't know if the rest of them will have had time to to look it over, but it it looks good. And we've discussed cash flow and that it worked for us. The refinance through Columbia Bank. So I would suggest that we make a motion to number resolution number thirty twenty twenty five.
I make a motion that we accept resolution.
Oh.
You go ahead. You have two questions. Yes, sir.
Would there be a penalty involved in early payment?
Luke, did you hear that question?
Uh, the the structure doesn't really contemplate prepayment.
Um, is there a is there something you could you could maybe change to allow early payment? Would you be able?
Currently, there's nothing in there. So it's a can't that I didn't mean. That's why I asked you. If there's if that's if that's something that's that's possible.
Is there a timeframe that you had in mind? You usually we wouldn't be negotiating on the fly, but is there a timeframe that you had in mind? Usually we wouldn't do a term loan and then have it prepaid right away, right? And so like.
Well, I think it's in the citizen's best interest that we, you know, absolve ourselves of egregious debt as soon as possible.
Oh, Franklin, I think that's great intentions. And I know that there's great intentions. And I know that we all are on our debt, not so we're working.
No, no, I I'm just asking.
We're not going to be in a position to pay this off to the law realistically. Unfortunately.
I understand that, but I mean, if 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 there's any language that prevents us from doing so, given the opportunities, that's all I'm but.
Okay.
And I think that's that's worthy ask.
No, that's a reasonable question.
And and if it if it were possible for us to make extra payments on the principal, if that if that is something that's part of it.
I think the term sheet says prepayments are not allowed.
Yeah.
On the term sheet, yes.
Yeah.
So I know I I think, um, you know, you and I were talking about this earlier, counselor. And I I thought maybe there would like, I just kind of curious to see now that we have an amortization schedule, I think early payment, at least on the lines that we were talking about is probably infeasible at this point.
But we'll be able to be allowed.
But I think anybody's allowed to recite this alone.
Well, it's.
Suppose.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Issues here is if we got put on time crunch. I don't think this is fine. So. I don't understand that, but I mean, it's always good to ask. No, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, there there are good questions to ask for us to be able to talk about and publicly make sure that everybody has a record publicly of what our our terms are and what our expectations are. And the the amortization schedule was very helpful for me to get after we had spoken earlier today. Just so I have a more clear understanding of of where we're going to be. And I I don't anticipate we're going to be in a position during the term of this loan to pay it off early. So at at one point in time, before we had the schedule, maybe there are things we could play with, but ultimately, the the amortization schedule, I think, set in stone, it's very much in line with our our cash projections are going to be over the term of this loan. I don't expect us to be able to get to a point between now and then where we're going to pay off any part of the principal early sadly. Yeah, but I I do appreciate the the focus at Columbia for for making sure that there was something for us to have.
Absolutely.
Yes, I make a motion that we accept resolution number thirty twenty twenty five.
Have a second? Let me say hi. Make a motion in a second. There's no further discussion last, but we'll call good.
All right, Mayor James Johnson.
Aye.
Council President Teresa Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor Burke. Counselor Hicks.
Aye.
Counselor Cobbs. Counselor Lambert. Motion passes. And then we also need a motion to accept the term sheet.
I make more. On favor? Okay.
Is there anything else you need from us tonight, Luke, Lucy?
Not for me, no. Just thanks so much for the opportunity to work with you all.
Yeah, thank you for everything you did. Appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Thanks, Lucy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. We'll move on to elected officials. I'd like to call on the commissioners this time.
Thank you. Things have slowed down a fair amount. Um, I guess legislative news is Representative Levy no longer has services of Isaac Ensco as the Chief of Staff. He is now Chief of Staff for Senator Todd Knapp from Willau County. Um, a great opportunity for Isaac, I think. Um, as far as the county is going, we had our Idaho meeting last week. Well, there'll be a week tomorrow. Um, not much participation, very quick and not a kind of discussion in it from and really no citizen. There was a gentleman that's in charge of the Greater Idaho Movement out of Leupien, I think is where it's from. I've been working fair amount on the forest plan revision, which is going on. Couple of things that I would note from that. Well, first of all, the the comment period ended last Friday. Um, there is a recommendation from all three of the forest supervisors for zero additional wilderness, which I think is huge for our communities. And also travel management will not be a part of this plan. And that is noted from the regional office as well as the Forest Supervisor for Willau Whitman, the out and out of this have no travel on any kind of part of it. Yumantilla has already got it out here and and Willau Whitman are not under cover management. We're the we have a very small chunk of the valley here, but we, those two national forests are are only one of about three or four in the entire nation that do not have travel. But, um, that's good news. Uh, last month went to Washington, D C. Never thought I'd get into this office, but I met with the Chief of the Forest Service, talked about the forest plan and talked about the these presidential, um, I'm actually just lost the term. Executive order. Thank you. About increasing timber production. And I think they've got some really good plans. Um, not only nationwide, but in our region too. And I think some of those things people will be able to invest knowing that we're going to have a more constant supply of of timber coming off of federal ground. Because it's almost zero right now. That money goes to the treasury and also a portion goes to county and schools. So, um, and then since there isn't much coming in, we also lobbied for what's called S R S. And that's a little bit of an odd name for it. It's called Safe and Secure Rural Schools. And again, twenty five percent of the timber cut usually went to the counties and schools. Um, and without timber cut, uh, it was actually Senator Ron Wyden, uh, started this years ago and it's in my view, welfare payment, uh, to counties and schools because we're not cutting timber off the federal ground. And that has not been reauthorized. Um, that was actually during the Biden administration. It wasn't reauthorized. It has nothing to do with the current administration. So lobbied for that. I think we have some support and hopefully that'll go through the board too.
I certainly appreciate you going down there and doing that. Thank you. That's great. And then I did have one question. We've talked about this at lunch, but I haven't been the best at keeping everybody else updated because I'm so busy. Uh, I just want to touch base on the library stuff again. What are we talking to be next May?
Yes, yes. Okay. And I stopped by. I am so bad with names. I apologize. You're like.
Justin.
Justin, nicest guy in the world.
He's great. Yeah.
Um, so excited. Um, my wife and I, I can't remember where we were coming back from. We stopped in there and got a she got the full tour and I think you've said a lot of great things going on and some good plans.
Good ideas. Yeah.
Yep. Uh, but that funding will be available next May and you are on our focus in the office to notify you as soon as possible.
That's for the five pool. Library.
And potentially the picnic table. Hopefully we'll have enough.
Bring that up unless.
I'm not promising anything, but I'm hoping that it's not in that fun that we can do both flights whole and the picnic tables, or at least a good portion of both of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got a question, but um, I was just curious about how much they've turned loose or going to turn loose with the forest or the mills that's left. The problem lies with cars, of course. And so water mills can just kind of get by, you know? And so I just want to get that for services and I hope you know that it's still a trouble.
I think so. Uh, as yeah, under this administration, um, at the local level, like during the report supervisor saying things I've never heard you say before, um, and supporting mills. Um, there's also, um, it's not a grant program. Actually, it would be a grant program because it's part of the Forest Service, which is under the Department of Agribusiness. And that is to supplement trucking ops, which is killing every industry, but particularly learned uh, timber industry. So that I think they'd be coming out fairly quickly. They did the first round and there was a little bit of money. I think they were testing it with some in water. Uh, see how it would work. But yeah, so the the again, I think with a constant supply, people can bank on. And then if we can get some help on the transportation costs, I think it'll be really well.
A lot of people.
Right. Well, I mean, if you look at our region, I mean, you in Union County is in a really enviable position. We've got industrial mills. Every county surrounding us, now this Bible Brock went out. They don't have mills. Baker County, Blauer County, Yumantilla County, which I think is just criminal. I mean, that's terrible. When we when you look at the condition of the federal ground, I think we're getting advantage through them.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, I don't see a deficit present. You have a chance to speak with one of Alex. They let you know what was going on.
All the time. Yeah, usually it's something along the lines of not much going on.
You must be a toll or something.
I know. What I think what our deputy was saying, our staff meeting earlier this week was primarily as as the weather's getting colder, things are just kind of settling down primarily.
Yeah.
There's not nearly as much criminal activity or criminal mischief afoot that.
Yeah, more than any complaints. So I know my mayor phone has not been ringing. So usually that's a good sign.
Yeah, they there is a copy of the the report for things that were done in town over the last month, if we will.
They're on that.
Go over that, but it's. Yeah. We're we're just chilling. We did make our first quarterly payment late. We made it today, but we made it. Um, that is not, I mean, it it we it left us with about fifty thousand dollars in the city's reserve fund. Um, so we will be able to make the next payments for the rest of the year. It's just our cash flow is so awful during the year. Um, that part of it, it took us some time to negotiate with the county treasurer to do a wire transfer. Um, because there is a very real possibility that if we were to send a check, um, given the the deposit timelines, that's not entirely impossible that any check we send would bounce just because the city's cash flow is that bad. There is so much money that has been depleted from our accounts over the last few years. So we we really, uh, really should thank our county treasurer for being flexible with us to make sure we could get that in. She did a really, really good job supporting us. Very, very grateful. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, what works?
Um, throughout the month of September, the public works have been busy with one water service repair, storm drain cleaning and sign maintenance. And have also been busy with road paving and setting up work zones for projects. The paving of North End Avenue has been completed. We have remarked crosswalks at the center line and I would like to thank the the Good County Public Works for their help with North End Avenue. Um, the Colbert project has almost been completely finished. We are just waiting on paving and it will be all done there. Uh, the culverts are installed in the intersection at Palmer Road and Hartford have been invited. Uh, this will create a much safer travel experience for motorists and pedestrians. Uh, like thank King Construction for their work on the Colbert project. The crack seal work on has been completed on Alder Street and a portion of the city hall parking lot is able to see some work also. These have all been very good projects for the roads around town. It has been very busy September for us, but we have completed some great projects. City council has done a standing job making the tough decisions on these projects and giving the ability to move forward with all the work. So, thank you.
Yeah, you know, made my day today. I read that. Thank you. I had I got a lot of good comments about that. Colbert up there at the top of fifteenth. That has been in a pretty dangerous spot. Been working for a long time. So thanks for all your work on that. That's really appreciated. I
There we go. Pretty good. So you guys have any questions for the time?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Public Library, it looks like Justin's.
Yeah, he's out. He's excused this afternoon.
Okay, do you have anything for him or?
He's doing a great job. Um, we so we we hosted the candidate for governor in town uh, on Friday and we decided to show up the library and it turns out the both of them are tech nerds and ham radio operators. So they got along very, very well.
It's visit.
Yeah, so.
We'll move on to ordinance songs.
The timber was pretty slow, but what deputies are saying because people are now doing things here. And so it's starting to pick up for winter. So and you can offer certain areas that need it.
Yeah, I had nothing but comments about noticing a different cleanup, but you guys have been doing it on town and stuff. So thanks for that. I did have one deal for you. Remember we looked at that and discussed that burnt place on twelfth? Um, did we ever come up with the idea for that?
Haven't heard back from there.
Haven't heard back from it. No. Okay. Yeah, because I think I think that's one that we could probably get cleaned up with some support from the council and administrator and everybody and probably get that cleaned up, but we got to have their cooperation. So.
Which one?
Well.
It's up there, uh, uh, top, almost top of twelfth, up past the creek.
Or.
Two story white place.
Four house down from Hartford.
Okay, we want to get that one.
Did the Cox's use the little?
Yeah, yours.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, uh, did you just want our help to go out and clean it up?
Uh, no, he was just reaching out to the property owner and trying to come up with a solution and some ideas. And I told him that one time, I remember the council uh, actually discussed approving, uh, letting them go ahead and get a dumpster if they would just get it cleaned up. And so I figured everybody was still on board with that.
Okay, absolutely. Well, if that's the council's bill, we'll just go ahead and make sure that option's available to them. Um, we'll just use our abatement budget and we'll just plan on it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Let them know that we'll do that.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be a tremendous help.
Well, I'm.
Yeah, I know we still have some money in that fund.
We do. Yeah.
And we're more than safe on that. So.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, there you go. We can talk with him. We're need that. Thank you. Okay, we want to mayor. Oh, well, I'll leave him next month.
Bye, Mayor.
Uh, I'm gonna be gone. Are you coming back? I'm not. I'm not resigning or nothing. To make that clear. I don't quit. Um, but I will say that I'm going to go on vacation. Um. My wife's brother is getting married in the Virgin Islands in the state of Pomus, so I'm gonna be gone for a little week. Um I haven't went on vacation in three years, so actually I went on vacation since I took over being the mayor. Just and doing a lot of important things and trying to help and love the community and think it's time to be gone and Teresa, who are lovely council president, is on board with. Taking over for me while I'm gone, so I want to thank her for that. Um other than that, I don't have uh anything else for tonight. Administration. Oh, I guess I should ask. You guys have any questions?
How nice is it at this time of year?
Uh it's thirty eighty-five degrees. It doesn't look like there's any chance of rain but one day.
Oh, my gosh.
Um I'm pretty excited.
I have heard you heard on there's some beautiful places on earth.
I've only been to Hawaii a few times, so I don't know. I'm a mother of my own, so it's great. So I'll let you guys know for sure.
Please take some pictures.
I will send you some.
Awesome.
Sounds exciting, man. It really does. Move on to administration.
I went to the League of Oregon Cities one hundredth annual conference. Um that was very, very cool just to be there for the one hundredth. Um I didn't love all the the sentiments expressed by the speakers when I was there. Former Governor Barbara Roberts was talking about just how. Uh good she how much good she's done for timber in the state and how she's the best thing that's ever happened to Oregon timber. And how everything's going fine in timber country because of her. And uh you know, it anybody who who disagrees, well, a timber company just donated to a project she's working on, so. Um sorry, Commissioner, I think Governor Roberts says he got there. Turns out everything's been fine with timber the whole time. Good to know. Good to hear it from the horse's mouth. Everything's fine. Yeah, yeah, she was. She was roasting herself. It was phenomenal. Oh, oh, the breakfast buffet was actually really good. Yeah, there was a breakfast buffet. It was phenomenal. They had bacon and smoked sausage, so I just had a pile of that. Oh, yeah, that's probably the best breakfast buffet that I've ever had at a League of Oregon Cities event, so great job, LLC. Um yeah, I was happy. I didn't love that. I didn't love all of the the partisan ship that was expressed there. Um we had a speaker. Who talked about um. Uh just how anybody who opposes multifamily housing is necessarily racist and classist. So just remember our tax dollars at work. If you believe in duplex, if you don't like duplexes, it's because you hate people of other races. Right. I know, right? Because the American dream is to live in an apartment, right? I think that's what we've established. I know. Well, oh, see, see, so it means that you're not a racist. Great job. Yeah, I don't like to be super political at public meetings, but by golly, the League of Oregon Cities put such political people on display with. An event funded by the taxpayer, so. Don't diss it. Take it.
I know you uh but thank you for your work on getting refinancing the studies. I'm going to be on official business, so I'll see you. So.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Um public records. All right, that's gonna be my next big thing. We have so many public records. If anybody wants, I can give you the.
Some kids from the school.
Yeah, so the the halls, I can give anybody who wants it a tour of our hall of records. It's literally a hallway full of records that are unorganized. Um we need to inventory all of our records and figure out what's there, uh digitize everything. And have a a way to be able to search it, put anything that uh is public record online so that anybody can check it. That cuts down on public records requests and work related to public records requests. We'll say our. Tyler explained earlier today just how well our public works has done uh with public records in the past because so much of their work already has to go to the state and other entities. Um public works has done a really, really good job with public record maintenance and organization over time, so I don't have any um problem there. There's not really going to be any work to do. As they do such an excellent job, it's gonna be the everything else, the the decades of police records that we're sorting through so that we can reply to background checks from the FBI and the state police. Thomas has been helping out with that. Thank you.
Um well, I'll I'll own the mess in the hallway. We we needed money and I said, show me our assets and the administrator showed me a building that was full of uh. Files and stuff and I brought the council and said, I recommend we sell this building to we need money for cleanup and stuff and building was costing us money. Well. Uh they recommended decommission and all this stuff. Well, we just threw a bunch of stuff away and then brought all these files and put them in the hallway because we didn't have nowhere else to put them. So why they were never um dealt with, I don't know. Um thank you for dealing with it.
Yeah, I mean, the the problem with maintaining them and archiving them and just keeping a record of what we even have preceded you, so it's not really your fault. I mean, before we had the hall of records, it was. No, don't don't feel bad. They had to go. Before we had the hallway of records, we had the ambulance shed of records and it was still just as poorly kept over there. I mean. There is easier to get to. I mean, you know, there. So the Secretary of State just released a new retention schedule, so part of this inventory is figuring out what we actually have to keep. Um I want to digitize everything we've got, basically. Um no matter if we have to keep it or not, because even having a copy is just gonna be good for us. Um some stuff we have to keep forever, like those police records, we we can't get rid of this.
But it does need digitized?
No, because we're not allowed to open them because we're not law enforcement, unless the mayor wants to appoint me a special police officer for the city of Elgin.
I think.
Yeah, that's yeah, CIS doesn't cover that. Um but yeah. Oh, yeah, the original ordinance and uh public records book from eighteen ninety-one when the city was founded, that's still here. I know, it's really cool. Yeah.
Pictures out front. Did anybody notice the pictures he found? Did you find those?
Yeah, those were back there.
Got some old history, put them up on the walls in there and looking kind of homey and nice, so check those out if you haven't checked them out.
Like you.
All right.
Yeah, so that's basically it. It's the the public records. That's my next big thing that's gonna take up my time and the office staff are gonna help me. And there's a kid who's doing some community service right now, scanning old records and digitizing them so that we can organize. It's great. Yeah, things are getting better. All right, anytime.
Move on to old business resolution for twenty twenty-five?
Okay. So I we I recently found the city's um strategic plan for economic development. It's called Elgin Vision twenty thirty. And one of the things we're supposed to year by the do by the year of twenty thirty is uh adopt a declaration of Elgin as a city of peace. There's an entity called the Cities of Peace International Coalition that provides a template resolution for this. You pass the resolution, you fill out an application, and if they like you, they call you a city of peace and you're put on their website. Uh they're trying to have one thousand cities uh sign on to this by this year, so um. It's it's kind of an odd thing to be in the, but it's like.
I'm for peace.
If, yeah, if you want to, go for it. If you don't, I don't think anybody's gonna gonna be mad if it doesn't pass. It's quirky.
Especially if it's international. And because they don't respect, they don't respect our nation, they respect our our freedom. I don't. I'm not. I don't. I don't want to be associated with that. And that's such a loaded word, city of peace. I mean, does that mean we're gonna be like a sanctuary city? We're gonna be anti-second amendment city? I mean.
No.
Are we? I mean, what what do these people stand for? What do they?
Well, the there is a resolution included in the packet. I think that that will will lay out. Let me pull that up. We can we can read through it. I think uh what was what was the city we found earlier today, Larry? Baghdad is on the list.
Baghdad, Ukraine, all of Ukraine.
Um okay, so. Yeah, I talked about, you know, the Indian Valley is a historic meeting place of Native American tribes throughout history. I thought that was cool. Um talks about the International Day of Peace that was designated by the United Nations. Um talked about World Health Organization goals, um about uh balancing physical, mental and social well-being. Um not just the absence of war and violence, but a condition where society has achieved a balance of prosperity, security, justice and hope. Um peace is necessary for everyone to achieve health as defined by the World Health Organization.
Well, let's uh let's do this. We've still got quite a bit of business to get through. Why don't we uh just pull off on this to the next meeting and we're a little bit more time to to read up on it. And uh bring it up to the next meeting. Everybody okay with that?
Is there a resolution or motion to table?
There are motion to table.
I have a motion to table resolution.
Give us a second.
Oh, second.
Motion and subject.
Aye.
Okay.
I, I, sorry.
All right, thank you. We'll move on here.
All right.
Your business.
Some of this has been accomplished, right?
Oh, yeah. You can thank for it. There's already various appear that um there's a number of technical and community appointments. Do we have any?
Uh there didn't end up being any. Um I know uh one of our our parks and rep commissioners, Jill Williamson, was gonna try and get some applications going around, but nobody uh submitted them to me by this afternoon, so. Um yeah, there's nothing, nothing new.
Can we schedule a meeting now and just kind of?
Yeah, so the the thing is, the fourth person required to maintain quorum is out all this week hunting. So uh we won't be able to schedule anything until he's back next week, so. Yes, we we need at least four members to um hold quorum and we have only four members and one of those members is unreachable, so. Sadly, we cannot schedule a meeting until he's back.
Okay. Also not do your public hearings. We got uh CDBG grant business tonight.
Yes, sir. Uh so like the last time, we basically just have to read out the public hearing notice and see if there's any comment for or against or neutral regarding the uh CDBG grant and then. We'll kind of move forward.
Right.
Well, I do have to read the the thing first. Yeah, yes. All right, second public hearing. The city of Elgin is completing a water distribution uh improvement design project. The Water Distribution System Improvement Design Project funded with Community Development Block Grant Funds from the Oregon Business Development Department. The location of the project is various streets in Elgin, Oregon. It is estimated that the project has benefited at least one thousand seven hundred thirty persons, of whom fifty-nine point three percent are lower to moderate income. Public hearing will be held by the city council at six o'clock PM on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at Elgin City Hall, seven nine zero S Eighth Avenue, Elgin, Oregon, nine seven eight two seven. The purpose of the hearing is for the city council to obtain citizens' views about the project and to take comments about the local government's performance. Written comments are also welcome and must be received by October thirteenth at seven at twenty twenty-five at seven nine zero South Eighth Avenue, Elgin, Oregon, nine seven eight two seven. Both oral and written comments will be reviewed by the city council. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Please let Alex McCaddick know at five four one four three seven twenty twenty two twenty-two fifty-three if you need any special accommodation to attend or participate in the hearing. For more information about the Oregon Community Development Block Grant Program and the project is available for public review at seven nine zero South Eighth Avenue, Elgin, Oregon, nine seven eight two seven during regular office hours. Advance notice is requested. And councillors, we did not receive any comments prior to this hearing.
I mean, it's time to open the public. Anybody want to speak in favor, against, or against the grant? I really want to say anything, but.
Uh just a huge improvement for the water system, so I think it's gonna be a great project. Actually, you know, it helps sustain our water resources.
And we asked for neutral comment. Sorry, Nick.
I'm pretty.
If I'm not, you want to say more on that?
Hearing closed.
Okay, well, I don't like doing this, but hearing closed, I'm.
God bless America. All right, supplemental budget.
Supplemental budget.
Yes, sir. All right, we have resolution twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Um we received an insurance payout and I thought it would be nice to pay off an insurance or a uh a loan early. We have a little over. Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we've been able to figure that one out.
Thank you.
Thanks, all right. No worries. So uh yeah, the idea would be we use this new insurance money that we've got to pay off the uh industrial park loan at the RV park early. It saves us a few thousand dollars. Um by not having to pay additional interest for waiting for another year. Um we'll, yeah, so we'll we'll use that insurance money um right now to uh. Pay out a part of it and then the other part of it will be paid next month when property taxes come in and that'll be that uh one less debt we've had. So I think that's pretty good. We've accomplished so far. Um we're gonna retire another debt at the end of this fiscal year, so that's almost a hundred thousand dollars worth of debt that we've retired. Um in about a year and a half, so next we gotta still retire the the new loan for um the uh. City Hall complex, of course, and then the other one we have to retire is a water system loan from two thousand nine uh that was issued then. Um I think that one's supposed to be paid off in twenty thirty-two. Um. Business Oregon has been really good about early repayments, so if before then we find some extra money, we probably could. Pay off that earlier if we really wanted to. That one is, I think, thirty-seven thousand dollars per year that we spend on. Um. Uh um debt service, so we'll we we use utility fees to pay off that one, so we'll continue doing that.
We just need a motion for the evolution, twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
And make their motion to adopt those.
All right, you want a second? I had seconded. I have a motion, a second, and then they're out for him to play the thumb. And discussion, if not, I'll ask for a real call back.
All right, Mayor Johnson, Council President Hilton Schaefer, Counselor Burke, Counselor Hicks, Counselor Cubs.
Aye.
Counselor Lambert, motion passes. Bless America.
We wanted it. Contract review board now, Hawkins Law.
Yes, so this is the bank council that we had to go through uh to uh get the the new loan taken care of on our ends, the end of the the entity that advocates on our behalf. Um this is something. Yeah, so that you I think the idea of the workflow ultimately was Columbia Bank recommended going through the non-contact that our city attorney or city attorney cleared it, so the city attorney is fine with us doing this. Um ordinarily, we don't want to just go and use another lawyer unless we really, really have to, but using a a bond counsel is something we have to do in this specific instance, and this was cleared by the city attorney, so. Um yeah, um and the the term sheet is thirty-two thousand dollars. However, I know if that smarts, that is being covered by the loan we are about to receive from Columbia Bank. So I I don't. Yes, I I want to have to hand them over a check for thirty-two thousand dollars.
Part of the refinance. This is a law we're put that handles that refinance. The the city attorney was okay for this, so.
Yeah.
Um anybody have any questions on it? We're on with motion.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with Hawkins.
Motion.
From the seat, sorry. Um, yeah.
No motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there's no good discussion. I'll ask for a real call back.
Mayor Johnson, Council President Hilton Schaefer, Counselor Burke, Counselor Hicks, Counselor Cubs.
Aye.
Counselor Lambert, motion passes.
All right. Well, they have to have a public hearing for this, correct?
Yes, so we we did get two liquor licenses uh renewals for both uh Big Horns and Elgin Station. Um the basically procedure here simply will be to see if there's any uh uh comment in favor, comment opposed, or neutral comment regarding either of these. Yep, and then uh if once that's done, the council can vote on whether or not to renew.
This time. Opposed, neutral. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I just have one, one question.
There's the public hearing, yeah. Oh, no, yeah, now you can duck.
Um so they were late with their application, is that correct?
Um they did still have a little bit of time, so um they they had claimed that they had never, they didn't know about it. And they claimed that this had never been done in the past. I guess I don't know what what went on on their end. When you submit an application through OLLCC, you have to say local government's okay with this, and that has been on the OLLCC's form for a very long time.
So I don't believe that the previous um. Yeah, staff and administration here have been keeping up on this stuff.
Yeah.
Um so I did reach out to the local bars and people who serve liquor and I might know this thing to be done. Yeah, courtesy call, basically, um and everybody was really cooperative and and uh got their stuff taken care of. I thought it was pretty tight the banner considering.
Yeah, yeah, this is. It's just one of those things that been left by by the wayside, like our ban on EMIOS hasn't been enforced in a. Yeah, yeah, this is, it's just one of those things that been left by, by the wayside, like our ban on emus hasn't been enforced in a very long time. Now, once, yes, in the residential one zone, you're not allowed to have emus. It's yeah.
Emu?
Emus.
Gotta send it back. Can we have ostriches?
It doesn't say that. So you can have an ostrich, you just can't even emu.
So we can have tiny birds and really big birds, nothing in.
Right.
Yes.
Not until next month. Let's move on to that. Somebody's saying in motion.
To give Big Horn and Elgin Station their liver wipes.
Second.
All right.
The bill's already ordered. Um, Lisa and I went through every one of them and everything seems to be up and up and everything seems to be paid. But we need to pay them, I guess.
One thing I, I do wanna say is uh real quick, these two lovely ladies come in early every month and spend a nice amount of time coming through and checking everything and doing a great job for us. So thanks to both of you for that.
Thank you.
All right, you want to make a motion?
Um, I make a motion that we pay the bill through the month of uh September.
I'll second.
All right, so we will move on to administration matters.
Um, I hope it didn't sound like I was impugning um Big Horns and the Elgin Station. But as a token of our gratitude, the ordinance also says they get to have a plaque that says liquor license approved.
Um, forget of the order, just uh, well, I already so, thanks both of you and also thanks to Tyler for recognizing us for, for work with uh supporting all your road projects. We greatly appreciate that. And thanks for the commissioner to make a meeting and know you've been busy. So thanks for getting out here and doing this and that day. Appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Uh, next meeting, we already have that set, regular meeting next month. We're not setting any meetings tonight for the other committees. It won't sound like it this time. I know we have a public safety meeting that happened as normally. Uh, this time we'll obtain a motion for adjournment going to uh executive session ORS one nine two point six six zero. So sorry, I was gonna adjourn, but I forgot we have an executive session.
Um, yeah, so the, the suggested motion for any councillor would like to make it is on the bottom in bold there.
I moved to enter into executive session under ORS one nine two point six six zero sections two subsection F and H.
All right, we will uh move back in the regular session at this time. And we're gonna suggest the motion on the screen.
Yep.
I move both. Uh, I moved to wave, or I suggest the motion uh to move and waive privilege on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, Balm Smith legal opinion.
There's no special or call for a roll call mode on this.
Mayor Johnson. Council President Hilton Schaefer. Councillor Burke. Councillor Hicks. Councillor Cubs. Councillor Lambert. Motion passes. So um, there is a, a document that is covered by attorney-client privilege. That means that nobody outside of the city government is allowed to review it. Now, there is an entity that has asked, uh, that is aware that this document exists and has asked to see it. And after conferring with council, we verified that it will be in the city's best interest to waive privilege on this document so that we can give it over to this entity that has requested to see it. And that also means that it is subject to disclosure for any public records request. So yeah, it, anybody in the community can ask to see this document as long as they come in. They can inspect it. If they wanna copy, they can pay a fee for the paper, that kind of thing. Uh, but that is what we have done is uh, uh waived privilege on this document so that it is now a matter of public record.
Having that entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favors?
Aye.
All right, we're.
Oh, yeah.
I don't ever do it. That's why.
I mean, I guess I call the director.
Uh, yeah.
I didn't use it. Yeah, or something before somebody's like, will you use that?